We're going to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. It's wonderful to have members of the public here tonight. So I think because we don't know each other necessarily, we're going to go around and introduce ourselves and you can do that as well. So we'll start with you, Patty.
Patty Dixon from Jamaica.
Bruce Parliament, Jamaica. Joe Winreich from Townsend.
Emily Long, I'm Chair of the Board from Newfane.
And Stephen John who's just over here, I'm Durin Dorfman.
He's principal.
Yes.
And I'm Lyndal Ball from Brookline.
And I'm Jeremy Callaway from Newfane.
Joseph Girardi of the Abbey Group.
Just.
I'm Paula Newton from Townsend.
Maya Schmidt from Townsend.
Wonderful. Welcome. Thank you for being here. So we have members of the public on the agenda. We'll get right to it really quickly. So I just want to run through additions or corrections because I do have one. Did you get copies of the agenda?
Well, we took a look at it.
He's going.
Okay, he went to...
We're going to make more copies.
It's not really full tonight, but it's coming right up. Okay, so additions or corrections. I have one thing that needed to be added to the agenda. There has been a request from the...
Sir.
...union to renegotiate the co-curricular contract again. It is that time of year again. That year again. I don't know. I can't remember if it was a two-year?
Two-year.
I think it was a two-year last time and that's why it's coming up a little quicker.
Two-year expiring this June, yeah.
Right. So what we're looking for are two people who are willing to step up and do this. The complicated thing about this one is that we typically try to accommodate the staff and meet at like 3:00 in the afternoon. And Joe and I did it last time. We did it fairly quickly. And if the board doesn't mind and if Joe's willing and I'm willing to do it...
Yes.
Might be good to appoint us just to make sure because I'm worried about whether people can be present and when. We do well.
You also know what you're doing.
We have a little experience.
We hope.
We actually have a little experience with all negotiations.
Yes.
Although if anyone else wants to do it and is available, please feel free to put your hand up and raise and go. So if not, we'll add that to the agenda for a motion under "new business" is where we'll put it. Okay? So now we are at members of the public. So you are on.
Okay. So, good evening. My name is Joseph Girardi. I'm a food service director for the Abbey Group and recently I just came aboard with Leland and Gray to work with the staff to ensure compliance with the new National School of Launch Program mandates and to make it fun and exciting. So I'll be here for the year doing that. And I just wanted to introduce myself to everyone and stop by and say hello. And if anybody has any questions, I'm always downstairs in the kitchen. You can always reach me there and hopefully get some good positive feedback.
That's a good statement, feedback.
Yeah.
That was good.
So how's it here starting out for you, Joe?
So far, I've gotten a lot of great comments and it's working out pretty well.
Great.
I'd rather let the everyone, you know, the food service advisory meetings, the teachers, the staff, the students, and when that trickles through, everyone, let them talk about it and, you know, and then we'll get some feedback and, you know, and adjust accordingly.
Wonderful. That's great. Good to hear that.
I have to say, Joe certainly put a good step forward here. First step forward, he stopped by the office twice, introduced himself and so forth. So this is, well, off to a good start. Do appreciate your reaching out.
And we do too.
Thank you. And I was with Twin Valley for five years and then up in Bellas Falls for another year. And so I've worked extensively with Wilmington and the principals, you know, Frank Spencer and Bob Morris, the new principal there, the superintendents and as we trickle through those folks. So been working with the students and the kids and, you know, and really with the Junior Iron Chef programs and so we're going to try to do that here and step it up a little bit and have a good food service program.
That's great.
Exciting. Junior Iron Chef.
Yeah, I know.
That's a... We'll be right in there volunteering for that one.
This barbecue chef right here. I need to go to him for some questions if I need anything answered. So I just want to keep it brief and short and just say thank you very much and I guess head upstairs if anybody needs anything, has any questions, by all means, please come and see me.
Great. I manage to make it into lunch once in a while when I have a meeting around and I will hopefully see you down there at some point.
Yep.
So I would really appreciate you coming. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
It's great to have that connection. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Thanks. When they ask for your recipe, that's when you'll know you're successful.
Yeah, right. Go get them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. As I said, Maya Schmidt, I have an eighth grade student here at the school. There's been a lot of buzz around town about the New England accreditation not being renewed. I didn't get the summer paper that was sent out. I did go online on the Leland and Gray website. I read that, but I was interested in getting some more information because like I said, I'm hearing the town buzz, but...
Lots of it.
Lots of it. So just interested in, you know, what this all means and how the decision was reached and anything else.
Yeah, it was a month's plural long process. I think we started talking about this last, we're agreeing, May, or I was going to say April, but maybe it was May. And the administration came to us with their, and I'm going to let them speak to it because they can speak to it a lot more, you know, closer to home than us. But we all, they brought it to us as a concern and a possible, you know, change.
Of not reading.
For, yeah, I mean, you know, there was a lot of discussion before we got to that point. But the board took it very seriously and I think maybe Durin and Stephen are, might have been a little surprised, seriously, because we kind of sent them home to do their homework a little more and do a white paper for us for, which I didn't, I don't have with me, but maybe you do have it. So if they haven't seen it, it'd be wonderful for them to see it because this was at our, was it our last meeting we made?
Yep.
Yes.
So it was in August. There are just so many names, I forget which or which. But we asked for that for lots of reasons behind why we were going to either support or not. So they handed that to us, made a good case for the board and we did make that decision. It's a good, I'm glad you're here. We did have parent, well, we had eight parents. I don't know if they had any more than one, did we?
Well, there are a number of meetings, so I can't recall. I know it was a concern on the part of the board.
We had one at the first meeting.
At the first meeting when we talked about it.
From Newfane and then we talked about it over three meetings.
Yeah.
I would ballpark around four hours worth of discussion over the three meetings. I mean, so it's really, it's been, we rehashed it quite a bit.
We did. We did.
And I'm embarrassed to ask, but does the agenda posted the notes? Like, I mean, I was on the webpage and I was having trouble even finding what time... No, not on the webpage, I take that back, but I was searching around. I feel bad that this all has all been decided and I just heard for the first time this weekend from some parents who were upset about it.
I don't maintain the website specifically.
Well, first of all, the website, just make sure you know where you're going. There's a WCSU website that has all the boards listed. That's where you find the minutes and the agendas.
Is that WCSU?
Yeah, under Board.
Under Boards.
We have a lot of different boards.
Don't we have a link on?
On the Leland and Gray website, there's a, but there's a link to the school board.
Okay, right.
Goes to the same place.
And that's taking the same place.
Okay, good to know. Thank you all.
So is there any way that we could kind of get, I mean, get some idea of how you, they are...
Right.
About the accreditation.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Why it was decided.
I'll let Durin start out and then explain the bigger picture issues.
Well, I have been co-chair of the NIESC steering committee since I came to Leland and Gray. The last decennial evaluation was 2005. I have written no fewer than four reports to NIESC since I came on. That was actually one of my first major tasks because it was something undone from the previous principal. So I had, and then, well, there's a lot of story to that. But I have devoted thousands of hours, mostly during vacations, to write 30, 40-page reports for them. And we remained on warning status or probationary status for a number of reasons. And essentially because they, in the 2005, they set out some 55 recommendations for us to implement based on that evaluation. And so our steering committee kept meeting and continued to address the recommendations. And then over last April break, I spent a few days reviewing, okay, two years from now, we have our next decennial evaluation and was basically making my own cheat sheet for the faculty who I'd been prepping for quite some time. And then I came to probably the biggest thing sticking out was that it's $20,000 for them to evaluate us, plus the more hundreds of hours that I would have to put in as well as the taking of faculty meeting and in-service time. And many schools add paid in-service days to the school year so that teachers have time to work on the evaluation. And so we were, so I shared my concerns with Stephen and I also wondered, boy, we have to report to our Title I fund, which we write an action plan every year. It's a federal grant. I have to report to the state for our improvement plan based on No Child Left Behind, which is now about 75% of the schools in the state doing a lot, plus, you know, all the reports I do for our own data collection to do database decision-making. Because what I report to them really is not the, these, I mean, whatever, what NIESC was asking for was very different from what No Child Left Behind demands and as well as what Title I, I mean, it's also a federal program, but they're still pretty different. Plus all this other, I mean, I'm always making, always trying to make database decisions with the help of many. And so I emailed the, there's a principal listserv and I asked a couple of questions. Are you a member of NIESC or have you stopped being a member of NIESC or anything like that? And I found that, and I really want to get all the numbers up because I couldn't believe how many schools have left NIESC in Vermont. And all of the seven through 12 schools, it was seven of them that had responded, had left NIESC. And the comments they had to say, and I know this is on television, so I've got to be careful, you know, in their emails, was not something I would necessarily email because it was so revealing how concerned they were about the process. And they withdrew because of all the reasons that I just said, the money, the circumventing of the goals of the school to pay, to do the NIESC evaluation and the expense. Because if you're a school of, say, a thousand like Essex High School, it's 20,000 and if you're Leland and Gray, it's 20,000 also. So when I accumulated all this information to share it with Stephen and I was, and I was very ambivalent because I understand that it's a, it's a recognition, it's a credential, NIESC certification. When I asked them questions around what's the alignment with No Child Left Behind, what kind of support do you have, do you have any models that I could look at? Because I was kind of a babe in the woods in the beginning. And there was no support, no support. No, you can't look at what other schools do. No, you can't do this. They said, but they would email me and ask for teachers to leave Leland and Gray for three days to evaluate another school. So we had a couple of people do that, which was an expense to us, of course, because we have to hire the subs and they're gone for three days. And what they came back with was not like, I can't wait for Leland and Gray to do this for ourselves. They had much more critical views on what is the value for the effort. And I basically shared this with the school board and Stephen helped with, in making the recommendation that we consider withdrawing. We also talked with, I talked with one person at the state, the Director of Assessment, Michael Hocken. You, I think, even spoke to the Deputy Secretary, right?
Yeah, I'll report on that issue when you conclude.
Yeah, so based on so many different sources of information and I'll, I mean, it's just, so I'll try to bring up the actual number of all the schools that have left. And the average size of the schools that have left is significantly smaller, like by 250 kids, than schools that have chosen to stay. The unusual thing is that the other schools in, are in Wyndham County, so Green Mountain, Bellas Falls, Brattleborough, Brattleborough, they have decided to remain, which is not, like I said, different from everywhere else. And I am developing another evaluation system with a consortium of other high schools. I think they're all seven through 12. And that was mandated by the board that we have to have an evaluation system. But I'm going to turn it over to Stephen.
And we asked for a timeframe for when we would have that.
Yes.
That next feedback from the administration here to let us know when that was going to be. One of the things that Durin didn't mention and Al, Stephen's going to touch on this too, was some of the questions that came from the board and board members, please feel free to speak up. I know you were all very engaged in this conversation, but we were concerned about our students, you know, and what that meant for them. And so we grilled long and hard and I'll let you sort of continue that story. I know you are. So go ahead.
First of all, my apologies to the TV audience since we've done this before, but I will reiterate my position and observation regarding the situation. The cost-benefit analysis was not favorable for us to continue this association. It is an association. In that regard, I don't use the word "club" somewhat reservedly, but it is an association, a volunteer association by schools and colleges in New England who seek this 10-year recycle of evaluation and reporting. First at three years, actually sometimes a two-year, then a five-year report and then an eight-year report. And I have been on visiting committees. I have attended or participated in the committee that saw the principal of the school fired following the report. I have, I wasn't very pleased about that, but that was the result of our visit as a visiting committee. And I have been at Whitingham three times, part of an evaluation self-study committee. Actually, sorry, two at Whitingham, once here. And so I know the process very well, but the problem is that the, our society's drive for accountability has moved from the traditional professional self-reflection by committees of teachers in the building to an accountability based on performance scores on No Child Left Behind assessments, the NIECAP scores specifically, math and language arts. That's what is reported now publicly regarding accountability for performance in the schools. Now, many of the board shares my opinion that that doesn't show what we need to be mostly concerned about, which is the whole child and their prospects for continuing learning. But it is the system that we are dealing with. So the school reports of adequate yearly progress for Wyndham Central Supervisor Union Schools, eight schools, I have four who received letters of commendation for continuing to meet or exceed that standard. And I have the remaining schools who are not meeting it in one area or another. In the case of Leland and Gray, it's math is an area, whereas last year it was both math and language arts, but language arts writing now is meeting the standard. The, that's the good news. But that would not happen without Durin's leadership and the investment in professional learning, which the board has undertaken and in our budget supported. The question we face in looking at a budget cycle this upcoming year is the expense that Durin mentioned and whether the benefit was there to be gained by our students. And the candid response, considered judgment on my part, is that it isn't there any longer. The, I have asked what the purpose now is of NIESC. They say improving instructional learning in the school, as are all of our goals. I say, what does it mean if you don't have a NIESC accreditation anymore? Are there any colleges who will deny our students' access? Are there any colleges who ask whether you're accredited? No, there are none. I talked to the Deputy Secretary of Education, John Fisher. He served on the Board of the NIESC Directors, Board of Directors for the NIESC organization for a number of years. He can no longer support small schools participating in this program because the cost-benefit analysis is not there. The cost-benefit is, just doesn't hold up. It's way too expensive for a small school, tremendously more demanding on the staff. Imagine this, we have 10 or 11 self-study committees. On each committee, we have four or five members. In fact, community members who have served in the past.
They do serve.
And those meet on a regular basis for a year, up to a year, to evaluate, reflect on what is going on in the school and make a report. Those reports are then reviewed by the NIESC Association and they send a visiting committee of volunteer teachers like myself and principals to visit the school and to ascertain whether those reports accurately reflect what's going on in the school and then make recommendations, which usually and often support whatever recommendations the self-study committee made. They usually don't pull something out of the sky. They, you know, it's because of the, have you been part of one of these before in your area? Okay, sorry, I want to put you on the spot.
Part of a country.
But there are, there is a regional, there is a similar regional association in the South and in the West. They, it is the strongest in this area or the strongest tradition for NIESC membership and accreditation in New England, which I feel in the past was a credit to our region. But regrettably, when I talked to the Associate Director, Deputy Director of NIESC at this point and asked these questions about the benefit and if there was any reason or hope for me to believe that in the next 10 years, they were going to move their cycle towards the standards about which we are held accountable, the Common Core standards, state standards, the answer was, there is one school that has made the effort to link the two. And so I said, so can you supply those materials for me? They did send me the materials. It's from a school, Portland, Maine, I think it was near there, or Augusta. And when Durin and I reviewed those separately and we asked each other our opinion of them, it was insufficient and really not going to be helpful for our school. I regret to say that the association is not moving with the times regarding standards-based performance and evaluation of student learning. And so I, anyway, that was my recommendation to the board. It pains me. I enjoyed that professional development that I experienced from that in the past, but it isn't any longer in keeping with the demands on our schools.
Can you please clarify the benefits for the large schools? I mean, I've heard you say that it's...
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's a good question. Good, good point. In the large schools, first of all, they have a greater ease. It's certainly not an impact on them financially. And in terms of their stress on the staff, the distraction that I feel as the math teacher, because I'm called to be on this committee, is much less because I have six people in my math department. One of them goes to that committee meeting and the rest of us can continue with our professional learning and working on our curriculum and improving our instruction. In a smaller school, they, we don't have that number of people. And it isn't just a matter of a math committee. There's one on social development. There's, you know, they're not just subject matter evaluation, there's community school relations there. A number of committees that really call for participation from members of all the disciplines in the school. So when we implemented this before, every single member of the staff was attending committee meetings, you know, on a bi-weekly basis in preparation for this. And when I was middle school principal here, I received considerable grief because the staff was made to feel by this self-evaluation process, they were jumping through hoops. They were trying to reach targets and assessments that were unclear and vague. This is a matter of opinion, I understand, but I am sharing with you the difficulty that your instructional leader faces when they're trying to implement something that is of no obvious benefit to the staff, the students, or the accountability standard that we're trying to meet.
And so how does that relate to larger schools though?
So larger schools are able to do it cost-effectively because they don't have to say that they are, they don't have the same standard of benefit they're looking for.
So it's, the teachers are better developed or students?
Well, just, just quickly, when I asked, if I have seven or eight committees and I have a limited number of people and you want representation from all these departments, their response was, well, you have people serve on more than one committee. And that was, that would be quite an imposition.
Agreed.
So that was just one example of whereas if you have, like Stephen said, a department of seven, you have a couple of people on committees, the rest of, say, the math department can continue the work of the math department.
Right. So for a big school, the benefit is that if they're accredited, if they're part of the New England Association, the benefit to them is the, it's better development for the teachers, it's better education plans for the students?
I would say in terms of the evaluation process, it's, it is more, first of all, it's more cost-effective because they have a budget three or four times the size of ours for, you know, for the same, for the same price. They can manage their faculty better. And I would say that in a smaller school, and you know, this is what I believe, in a smaller school with 45 faculty and a total of 70 staff, I can supervise everyone. If I was in a school like where it was before where there were some 110 teachers and still only two or three administrators with the authority to supervise teachers, an external evaluation around curriculum management, supervision and valuation to have an external evaluation of the processes in place because it's unmanageable, oh, I don't want to say unmanageable, but it's nearly unmanageable, whereas we've got a really tight ship here now.
So the evaluation, they're coming in and saying, hey, we see this, you should do that. They make recommendations on the curriculum, is what I'm understanding?
There, there's some...
Or the teachers.
Yeah, it's about eight.
That's what I was missing was what the evaluation.
Can I just kind of paraphrase what I think you're asking? I think Sixman is asking, what are the benefits for the bigger ones? In other words, out of the, not just the cost-effective, but in a teaching or learning sense?
The cost, the cost, the cost.
And you want to know what?
But I mean, maybe I'm just not, I'm not catching on to something else.
Well, I think that Durin spoke to a benefit in terms of the supervision evaluation of staff in a larger setting. However, I will certainly share my fellow superintendent in Brattleborough's insight as to the use of the NIESC evaluation. Brattleborough's physical plant was in the pits.
When you say physical plant, you mean the school?
The building.
Got it, okay.
They needed to go for a $56 million bond, the largest bond this state has ever seen for a public improvement project. And they won that vote, but they used the evaluation committee from NIESC to impress upon the public the deplorable condition of that building. So that is a prime example of how you can, an administrative team can use this process to leverage certain things to happen. Actually, I was part of a visiting committee that it was obvious that was the purpose of the administration in that inviting, you know, that was one of the things that the school community felt strongly about it. They needed to improve their building. This was not Brattleborough, this is another one in Massachusetts. As I said, this is a regional deal. So the fact is that we have to very jealously guard our and preserve our professional development time and our learning time to accomplish the things that we can accomplish and not be distracted by the things that may be counterproductive or, as I said, distracted frankly. And we would not be in a position of being able to say this year that the students met adequate yearly progress in ELA, English Language Arts, on the NIECAP scores if there hadn't been a very intense focus and requirement of faculty meeting time, after-school time as well as the in-service days on the training of our staff and writing across the curriculum in Leland and Gray specifically. This is parallel to the elementary schools, the balanced literacy and phonics and pedale reading. And in math, now one year behind on the same cycle of learning and implementation, improving our instructional skills, is the math non-negotiables by grade level that are strictly aligned to the Common Core state standards that Dr. Mahesh Sharma has been providing a training for our teachers. And the very encouraging thing for Dr. Dorfman and I is that we see... And the very encouraging thing for Dr. Dorfman and I is that we see, we're not like coercing people to attend these workshops. The teacher is seeing the benefit in their students' performance and the benefit in their instructional skills. So we are encouraged by what we see, not only the results in students, but the fact that, I've been to rooms that don't have room for anybody else. There's so many teachers coming voluntarily to the Dr. Mahasharma math workshops. And I just could not in good conscience say that we can then call a halt to that, which is what happened previously at Leland Gray. When we did the NEAS study, we called a halt to that activity for two years. And we devoted all of our in-service time to the self-reflection, to study the reporting, engagement with the community. And the board directed Dorin and my to come up with an alternate means, there has to be some external eye, there has to be some external feedback. And there are a number of schools in this state that are in exactly the same predicament, have come to the same conclusion, in fact, some of them came to it long before us. And so that's what Dorin is working on, parallel schools, parallel situation, size, so that we get feedback by exchanging students, teachers, and get that perspective from, in a more cost-effective way that's going to really meet the needs of what we want to know, not what this other organization who has not changed their standards since at least two cycles ago.
So you said there's a time, you've given them a timeline on when you want that?
Yes, that report's coming out.
We did, I think we said...
The same timeframe, so in the fall, in the twenty-fourteen, fifteen school year, we would conduct the evaluation. So this year, I would be working with the other four high schools to develop an authentic evaluation system that we would engage board members, students, faculty, staff, and that we would carry it out the following fall.
And we're hoping this relationship with reciprocity models what has to happen here among small schools that are on the move.
Yeah, it's really a leadership thing.
Quite honestly, it'd just be more cutting-edge to get to the meat of the matter, which is that with all these new standards coming on for these teachers, they're having to somewhat reinvent how they teach and to be able to have time where you're meeting with other people, not in Maine, but in Vermont, locally at a small-sized school to be able to help evaluate but also learn from. Like they would be coming back, I'm assuming, with good feedback and with good positive, you know, interactions that could really be, you know, a side benefit.
The factors that impacted my decision the most were a few that have been brought up here, the fact that we are on the road to some exciting things that are going on here and some incredible goals. And that the faculty and staff is working as a team and they're, they seem to be pretty much on board. And then suddenly to just halt all that for two years would just be such a shame. And also that there are alternatives in the works that seem to be almost more appropriate for us and would probably provide actually much better information for us and create much more teamwork type of self-reflection. And also the fact that there is not a school board meeting that I've been to, that there's not some sort of data that Dorin gives us that shows us where we are, where we're going, how she's tracking it. And the one concern I had was the physical plant. How that was an area that NEAS did kind of help and she has promised that she is going to keep right on that and make sure that things are repaired as they need to be and assess the physical plant on a regular basis. And I have no reason to believe that she won't do that. And just those things alone made me feel very confident about this and that we are being cutting-edge and moving forward with something that's much more appropriate for our school and for our students.
I was just going to say, I think that the people that I've been hearing from that are concerned about this, if there was some way that, I mean, I'm trying to get the information, it's late now, but I want to get as much as I can so that we can inform that there is something in place, you know? If more people can hear that, I think there will be less worries, less concern, think that, you know, well, we were accredited, now we're not, what's going on, this girl's going, you know, you just hear these things, it's like, all right, well, and coming to these meetings is helpful, but I think that the more information that's put out there regarding this process.
A big thing is to watch agendas on the website. Because then you know what's being discussed and you see that, oh, and then reading the minutes, that's how I got back involved with board work is.
I would also go a little farther and say that now, for the last, I don't know, year now, you can watch us on TV, you can hear and see exactly what we, how, the process we went through as we discussed this at our board meetings. And Brattleboro Community Television is here at every meeting and we truly appreciate that. And hopefully, when you encounter people in the audience, you'll do, you will encourage, I mean, in the communities, you'll encourage them to do what you've done, which is wonderful. We're thrilled to have you here. People should come and ask these questions. These are good questions, they're hard questions, they're questions that are relevant and critically important to our, not only our students, but to our communities. It's really important. But also encourage people, well, let's go check it out because it's actually on TV. You know, and they do keep...
Not as fun now.
And it's true, but it's hard for people sometimes to come out to meetings and we recognize that, I mean, it is. We're also, I haven't received one phone call on it, honestly, and I'm actually a little surprised to hear you come tonight because we did talk about it for quite a number of months. For us, maybe we, we don't, because we talked about it so long, I think maybe we felt like we were out in the open and nobody was coming to us. And I don't know if anybody else has had phone calls or feedback, but we just haven't had any. And so for a large group in the community that sounds like you're speaking about, to have that conversation, I wish they would come to us and let us know. I mean, there's ways for us to get that information out a lot better. I mean, Dorin does reports for community all the time, she does her Monday notes. And I think you did one for Monday notes about this, did you?
Yes, and I also sent a press release about thirty weeks ago to the Brattleboro Reformer. I sent them two press releases and I haven't seen them publish either of them yet. But one was specifically about why we're leaving NEAS and it was a summation of things that set up board meetings, all the reasons why, because I felt, you know, with the Stevens' approval, that we had to get the word out there in a public way beyond just the board meetings, but I don't know why they haven't sent it out yet.
The white paper report that we requested from the administration and I think Dorin will probably email it to you or something, is that what you're planning on doing? So if you give her your email address, she'd be happy to email you, not only that, but anything else you have, that if you've got other documents that you can send to them about that and the press releases.
We requested that document to have it concisely written, the rationale and the plan for the public because we were talking about, because it does sound horrific that they're no longer accredited. You know, when you just hear that, it sounds terrible. But then when you realize the state doesn't require it, they're kind of a strange little group that just exists and, I mean, it's very, the more I dug into it...
Colleges.
Much of a college thing at a high school.
My daughter's a junior, my other daughter just graduated from NEAS, a seventh grader. And I was, we were talking about colleges and they said, well, did you hear, we're not accredited, anyway, what are colleges going to say? And it got me thinking, you know, and so I didn't really look into it.
That was one of my questions for the, so just, yeah, the reformer still hasn't published it yet. But they, so of the schools I, the principals I asked on the list are, so I, there were many, many that were never members of NEAS, but seventeen responded. Ten of them had left NEAS, all of them were public schools. The seven that remained, two were private schools. So basically fifty-nine percent had left within the last five years. And what, and I asked those who had left, had they had any repercussions, has any colleges? And they said in a, one school, all said no, so of the seven, all said no, they haven't heard anything, or I should say ten, they haven't heard anything. But one school had a foreign exchange student like five years ago who asked. That was it. Of all of those thousands of students that went through those schools, it was just one question about it. But the student came to their school anyway.
Well, and just to reiterate, the NEAS organization itself makes no claim that this is required for college entrance.
That's right.
Their concern was, well, this person graduates from an accredited school and this one doesn't, which one are they going to, I mean, that was the topic of this conversation.
Exactly, but the only way to assure you of that is to inquire yourself with the institutions, with the colleges, close enough to colleges, yeah. I have not found anyone, including the Deputy Secretary of Education, who sat on the Board of Directors for this organization, claimed that there was any advantage to a student coming from such a school. It's shocking. I thought the same thing before I looked into this.
My thought about this is that I think NEAS itself is going to have to be doing some real soul-searching because I don't think we're the only ones. And unfortunately, I think that the organization itself has not changed with the times and with all the other self-reflections that we do and the other data that we're looking at, all the time that we're required to look at, they need to change how they're going about their process as well, or this is going to be continuing to be a problem for them in more and more schools. So I tend to think that we are on the cutting-edge by doing this and I think we're meeting the needs of our students in a much better way by doing this.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, although I'm new on the board. I can hear and I can see what Dorin and the others are doing for the students in the programs. I come out of years in a New York State school, a public school. And what's happening here is so exciting and so the leadership thing, everything that's happening, and your kids are going to get that kind of education because she's going to give them the time to do those programs and colleges are going to look at that. What did the kids do in the process of going through Leland and Gray? And the teachers couldn't do that if they were doing the other.
The irony in all this was just before the August board meeting, I got a letter from NEAS saying we were off warning in probation status for the first time in, since two thousand and five.
They want you to weep up.
And, right, I was like, this is too funny. That was, that was poor of them.
I would also just make...
It really came kinda, I mean, I'd sent them my last report and then six months later, after sending a report, I hear from them what they thought of the report. And usually it's a list of more things you need to prove to us, but this time it was starting the process for the next decennial evaluation and you're no longer on the status.
I want to point out to the public that Dorin by no means caused or created this situation with NEAS. She inherited this with previous administration. And, you know, certainly I was part of that administration a long time. But I have to say that it was very disappointing when I became Superintendent to find that reports had not been properly filed, that action had not been taken. And thankfully Dorin took charge, accepted the, you know, the burden of making that up, compensating, you know, the extra time to mediate these shortcomings. And now, you know, at the eleventh hour, she's received the, you know, the, the okay, the good housekeeping seal of approval from NEAS.
Joe has pulled up on our website, I think it's your press release, did you put that on your website, on the website?
September second.
Sounds right.
It's already...
Yeah, I read that.
Okay, good. Because that's one piece that we've gotten out through Dorin.
And then if you go back, all the reports that Dorin submits and I submit in writing are posted on that website as well.
On the Leland and Gray or the WCSU?
You have to go to boards, but there is a link from Leland and Gray to the school board, but I'm just saying that I'm, you know, my office is very diligent and I credit my receptionist assistant, Ally Haskock, who actually is a graduate of the school, for making sure all the policies, all the board agendas, all the board minutes are posted there and those minutes also include the superintendent's reports and the principal's reports. So there are, you know, the access is, the information is there, much more so than it's ever been in the past. Now, of course, people have to reorganize, refocus themselves to get to that. Just because this is being recorded doesn't mean anybody's necessarily listening to it. Although I met a little kid at the store the other day who said, hey, I saw you on TV. So somebody's watching. Anyway, thanks for your comments. This kind of conversation really refocuses the intent of the board and the administration to collaborate on this very important mission and goal, to do the best we can for all our students.
Thank you for your time. Everybody's time is precious.
Well, we really are thrilled you're here, honestly, and I hope you'll keep coming back.
They mean them.
Once town's reappraisal is done, I'm on the list again.
Oh, yeah. Which town is that, which one?
Pardon?
Which one, which town?
Town.
Oh, oh, yeah, wow. No, are they still in the process? Because they issued bills, I mean, they issued tax bills. I was at a board meeting there last night, so I know that the bills were...
It's a big job, I admire you for taking that on. So is there anything else?
No.
Okay, well, please feel free to stay, we're going to go right through this agenda. I don't have any correspondence, I don't get into that.
There was nothing in the mailbox.
Does anybody have any correspondence? If not, we'll move on to administrative reports. Dorin, you did send yours out, there were three parts to it. Everybody, I'm assuming, got it?
I hope I'm not boring you guys.
I don't know what happened to mine, but I think I have trouble with it.
I couldn't open the principal's report.
No, I couldn't either, Allison said...
See, I'm the one who wrote her about it.
I didn't have a file.
I didn't have a file.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I re...
It would let you save it, but then it would ask you where to save it.
Yes, I thought Stephen resented it.
I found that out and I resented it because Brockford, but you probably looked for it the second time.
I didn't get it.
I didn't get it.
Oh, no.
Maybe I sent it to Allison.
So if anybody wants to see if you're...
Thanks so much.
I've got a printed copy.
Oh. I will just quickly send this to the board.
Yeah, just so everybody understands what happens there if you don't have the DOC.
I didn't even notice that until Dorin sent it back to me. After I emailed her and told her I couldn't open it, she resented it and then I realized because she told me what it was. I was too busy opening other things, so.
Actually, I took it and added the DOC and that's all.
So if I save it...
Well, I would have done that too if I had noticed.
You didn't do it on there though.
Or Allison can send it to you.
You can't do that on there though.
No.
That's why I'm having her send it to you.
Allison sent it to me, Patty.
Actually, on here it thinks it's an Evernote document.
Allison just sent it to me.
It just goes blank on there.
And I haven't tried to open it in Evernote.
Okay, well, anyway, we can hear it too. Yeah, we can speak to this anyway, if anyone wants.
Oh, wait a minute.
If anybody wants to look at it, let me know, there's a copy here. If Joe brings it up on his, he can share.
I've got a token.
Let me see if I can bring it up.
A Mac will do anything. It'll open anything. It's trying to do on my silly PC.
So there was quite a bit of information in the principal's report. Does anybody have any questions as you're looking at it or if you looked at the other ones, the Act Seventy-Seven had a follow-up addition?
The workshop that the teachers went to and giving their reflections as to how they were going to change their, their style and their, you know, plans, their curriculum plans and things to go with the Common Core.
Particularly the one, sorry, particularly the one, the teachers that were incorporating math, science and literature all in one, reading the forest, that was very...
I love the co, like they do, like, is it Jane Olmstead and Linda Rude did the history and English together? And now another class is going to be doing science and English together.
With the social studies component, right?
That's wonderful.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that was cool.
I would, I will recommend that another team form for another writing collaborative institute, we were the, one of the only high schools represented, there were only two principals there and I was of a hundred and twenty people. And like I wrote in here, we were a team and it's, I see the immediate difference in the teachers' classrooms of the thoroughness of the understanding of what it means to teach deep reading and writing for understanding. Their whole approach to really, all of their instructional units, I'll go in the room and I'll see the methods that we learned. And because it was this notion of slow PD in which they were really able to take a critical look at their content and refine it so that it brings about much more of the literacy development in the students, so I just...
And the specialized components.
Yes, yes, having two special educators there.
That's the value of not having NEAS.
Okay, the other, and also connected to that, I'm just going to start at the beginning around Act Seventy-Seven, since it is a... Act 77, since it is a complex piece of legislation and that there are the four components, dual credit, personal learning plans, alternative means to high school completion and early, early college programs. And so I'm just gonna deal with one a month. That's about all I can handle and dual credit, I hope, is the biggest one and it has really jump-started, were people able to open that document? Okay, good. Okay, really jump-started the process at Leland and Gray. Last year, we had 19 students earn college credit for foreign language and I have identified, so that is six different courses. And we have identified nine other courses that could possibly be for dual credit, so students would take, would get college credit for taking environmental science, physics, chemistry, meteorology, anatomy, physiology, economics and psychology and a couple of other science classes. This is different from the AP courses. And I had a meeting with the Social Studies and Science Department this month to talk about the process of what literally they would have to do is become a community college of Vermont or community, or New Hampshire Community College adjunct faculty member. The voucher system that the state has made law basically means a junior or senior at Leland and Gray can go to one of some dozen campuses within the state of Vermont, register for a class, go on the dual credit website that the state has created, get a voucher number and that number pays for that course. They can do one as a junior and they can do one as a senior. So, that's very nice for our students who are at the place in life where they can drive over to a college and do that. That's not true of many of our students. And the whole purpose of dual credit, where it says around goals, by earning college credit while in high school, students will be better prepared and will be more likely to attend college upon graduation. That more likely is key because if they take those college-worthy course, college credit-worthy courses with teachers who they know well, who they know care about them, who expose them to higher level learning and the safety within the school, and then they get a CCV or NHCC transcript and then they're already, they've got the big, they're like already in the gate to go. And fortunately, at this point that it's become law, our teachers recognize this value. And there's pros and cons for these, you know, CCV or the New Hampshire one and that I'm still working on, it all has a cost. But basically, what I have, what I feel is that there are gonna be some high schools, now that this is law, that are really not gonna touch this much. They're gonna go, okay, our kids who wanna go to college, they'll get their vouchers and two years from now, we're gonna have to pay for 45% of that rate, which I have listed here as some, what is it, $313, but two years from now, probably like $350 per kid doing that. So, we, so I, whereas if we offer the courses here, we still have to pay some of the course credit, you know, when I wrote, it's probably about, well, 139 for, based on this year's rate, so maybe it'd be 150, 155. So, that would be roughly, you know, 40 kids a year, I think I said, or I wrote 60 actually. But that is for just two courses. You can go to Brattleboro and take a whole semester or two semesters, or maybe even three semesters of college accredited courses, particularly in the tech center, and we can do the same thing. And I, and I, my timeframe for this is that the spring courses that I've named will be for college credit, that for qualifying juniors and seniors, and we have to have a process, I mean, by law, we have to have a process to kind of vet readiness of students. And my first blush at this is really, well, if you took the course prerequisites, then you're ready for the course. And you have to earn a certain grade in the course, usually around 85 minimum, and then, but CCV has like an Accuplacer that a student has to take in order to qualify to take the courses and they'll even come here and administer the Accuplacer for us. But it's gonna be the difference. It's gonna be one of those tangible measurables, this high school versus that high school. Does the school not offer dual credit on campus and kids just to take two courses over the course of their high school career, you know, once as a junior, once as a senior? Or can they take, well, here it'd be, you know, 12, because they're not gonna do all three foreign languages, so say 12 college, so if they took 12 courses, 36 college credits that they could earn while in, say, their junior and senior year, but we'd have to pay for that or we'd have to have some kind of system that they pay part of it. At Brattleboro right now, the students pay $100 of course.
It's a lot less expensive than college.
Yes, yes. And I'm thrilled that we were able to pilot it last year with SIT being our partner. There was no money exchanged between us. Now they want something a little more substantially beneficial for them, which means it will probably be some kind of financial relationship. But when we moved away from the Vermont Virtual High School or was it VHS? Virtual High School, that was, I had said, well, that's because we will be looking at replacing it with dual credit. We did do that with SIT. Fortunately, I mean, fortunately for us, it didn't cost anything. It's now gonna start costing us something as of the spring and the more students we have participate, the more expensive it's gonna be for us, but that's part of the state plan. And Leland and Gray has long been, I know I'm talking about this a long time, but it's really big on my mind right now, has long been a school where students have been able to access a lot of opportunities. Well, right now, this is the big opportunity for students. What are high schools gonna do? Because I can enter into agreements with colleges in Maine and New Hampshire and Massachusetts, we can do all kinds of things, so the law does not prevent that. It just gives the bare minimum. Any questions about that? And I think, I mean, there's a lot more in the report, but that's the main thing I wanted to talk about tonight.
Were there any questions or community? It's pretty exciting.
Yeah, obviously there'd be publicity for students and parents and about this.
Once we have it established, right?
Yes, well, yeah, that's right. You don't wanna do it before that.
Right.
We have to credit the state somewhat, the legislature for providing the resources to do this and recognizing that it's, in fact, I gave testimony along with Ron Staley, Dr. Staley down in Brattleboro to make sure that the small schools and more rural settings such as ours had equal access. Now, it's pretty hard to compare what equal access means for us in Brattleboro, as Durin said, who started actually, Brattleboro started this program many years ago and first of all, could not get it to happen with anybody in Vermont, had to work with New Hampshire Community College to get credit. That's where they, that's where they started with because New Hampshire's legislature obliged the Community College of New Hampshire to do this. Took us a little while to catch on here, but I do wanna give another little historic perspective. This school and this Board, in approximately 2001, proposed a similar situation, dual credit with the Graduate School of Marlboro College in Brattleboro. And we could not get Brattleboro to go on. Who was it? Which one? There was some Board would go on, it was Vernons or something. But anyway, we couldn't get it to happen because it needed a consortium support. But I know that this Board and the high school principal from way back, actually Ron Staley himself, before he became Superintendent down in Brattleboro, and I were proponents advocating for this and we had tremendous buy-in and it was terribly disappointing to see that we could not persuade others to join on. So, I'm very happy to see that my committee, Durin, for doing it. And I certainly urge the support of the Board to continue and this will be a budgetary consideration increasingly as we move forward and the allocation of resources that are very limited.
It's so funny because one of the teachers said, "So, I'm gonna be an adjunct faculty member, do they pay me for that?" I said, "No, we pay them."
Put it on your resume.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Anything else you wanna talk about? Anybody have any other questions about the Principal's Report?
If I could just throw something in, there has been lots of feedback around the new tardiness rule and I have with me a proposal for change that I wrote about, that the Dream Team proposed, that was in the most recent Monday notes and so they gave me the proposal today. We're really fast-tracking this about how the Student Council really began to understand about what time does their day start as opposed to what time can you be in school? And then I got an email from a parent and can I just share this?
Well, you don't identify the parent.
I will not. I place several hundred students in work-based learning experiences every year. I know employers in Southern Vermont. I meet new employers virtually every day on my job. My first question is always, what should we be teaching kids? The answer is always the same, could you teach them to show up on time, ready to work? If you could just teach them that, we could teach them most everything else. And then it goes on to say that fully support a stricter tardy schedule. I believe it's what's best for kids and goes on a little more, but that was, that gave me like, wow. And that, so I read this and then 10 minutes later, I open an envelope on my desk and it's $1,500 from the Stratton Foundation to support our whole child initiative around clothing, dental apparel. So, yeah, it was a good day yesterday.
Durin, you had a, had a great Monday Notes article about that and I was thrilled to be able to get it, but it had to be another Board member who sent it to me because I don't get Monday Notes and I went online to see it and it wasn't posted online yet because, you know, the new one wasn't up. So, I think I've mentioned this before, if you could make sure that Board members who aren't, don't have kids in the school do get the Monday Notes, it's very helpful for us, especially when community members are calling us and there's something that they're getting information on and we don't have that information. So, if you just make sure that all the Board, I don't think, you could just include all the Board, even if their parents may have access to it.
Yeah, we do.
It'd be very helpful for all of us to have it. I was very impressed with the article and the thoroughness of what you wrote in Monday Notes about this.
It's definitely groundbreaking.
It's only gonna be every other week this, this year. We'll see how that goes.
It's a big job. I'm surprised you've been able to do it at all, but.
Part of the change process, you know, letting people know what's going on.
Does anybody have any questions about the, or comments about the tardiness?
I wasn't prepared. Yes, I do. I have, and I know that there are a lot of concerned people. I think we're hoping to talk about that on Thursday with you.
Tuesday, that parent advisory group will be primarily devoted to the topic.
Yes, I saw that.
Yes, and no change will be made until after that group meets.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I'm filled in a little bit by my daughter Emily, who's a junior and is a little bit, I mean, connected with this Dream Team or-
Oh, nice.
Yeah, a little bit.
Student Council.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Durin. Any questions for Durin on anything? Comments? If not, over to you.
All right, so I'll try to be brief. I did send all the Board my opening remarks for the school year, which addressed education equity and I welcome your comments, you know, by, by email or whatever, but I do intend those kinds of remarks to be strategically conceived, to promote some reflection on the part of our professional staff. Basically, I, just for the public's interest, I tied it to, the most important thing now that we've reached, certainly in most cases, adequate yearly progress, sufficient number of students having met the standards, particularly in Language Arts, what I'm trying to say, what I wanna make, take pains to impress our staff with, is that there's still the 20%, there's still the next group to go and the most important thing for them is not what you as a teacher convey to them by way of content and what you expect them to retain the next day or the next week or the next year, but rather how you have made them feel in the classroom. Teaching is a very personal experience and if you as a teacher, you can make each student feel, as I was made to feel by someone pretty famous, that they knew I could succeed, knew I would accomplish something and expected me to do so. That is the key to the highest level of education attainment.
That was great, that that was in those comments. That really jumped out. That was terrific.
Thank you. So, actually, I got an email from a teacher who is, took leave to take the family around the world or at least to Europe or something for six months and wrote me from Scotland saying that they, they read my remarks.
Oh, your remarks?
I was feeling like, whoa, I'm pretty famous and shared them with teachers that they were meeting with in Scotland or something. Anyway, the other big report, I have some other short reports. We did hire a new HR person to replace Kathy Velsor, not that Kathy Velsor's replaceable, but just by way of transition, she retired last July 1, June 30th. And I've only replaced the position with a halftime position. I'm cognizant of fiscal constraints, basically, and I regretted that I didn't make that remark last night at the meeting. But at any rate, that's, it's, the woman's name is Claire Johns. This will be a great entertainment in the office since her name ends with an S, is spelled the same way as mine, last name, or knows how we came up with that, but at any rate, there's a, there's a Miss Johns and there's a Mr. Johns. We're not related, okay? So, anyway, so.
No little Johns or anything.
Yeah.
That was cute. You did have a good day, didn't you?
This is a very competitive, better group of candidates, quite a multi-level process of interview and review and we're very pleased to have Claire with us. She's starting this week and just getting right into it. She will establish specific hours, probably they'll be Monday, Tuesday and Thursday, but we're gonna see what, you know, meets the needs of our clients, being the teachers primarily and employees in the next couple of weeks. I have also called your attention to the strategic plan. I emailed this to the Board. This was revised by your WCSU Board on the retreat, at the retreat meeting at the Hermitage and I think some of you made it there, I can't recall, who knows there and so forth. Now, I am calling attention, wait, a pretty good turn of the page. I will call your attention to, to the fact that the most controversial debate at the meeting focused on the last line of this strategic plan when you referred to it and look at it. The last line says, "Promote locating, evaluating and securing novel, for example, non-property tax funding sources for sustainable programs and partnerships." And I think for some members of the Board, or at least attending Board members, the specificity of non-property tax or the word novel caused some reservation and of course, this is not, it's a document by the WCSU Board and certainly it can be changed depending on interest. I'm calling the public's attention to that. I know that I had some concerns about the, the goal, it says a school-community goal that, that would be, the administration under Principal's would be held accountable to locating and evaluating and securing novel funding sources. Well, I really want to call my administrative team to task regarding instructional leadership, providing for improved instruction in the classroom. The idea of spending times, although Dorfman here is to be commended for all the grants she's managed to gain, that's certainly her, her interest and particular skill, but I wanted to make sure that my Principals weren't, weren't held accountable for a certain quota of such novel funding that we had to come up with. That's the difficulty of goals when you, when you are, when you're setting them as a Board, you have to recognize how it comes across to the people who are directing the work to get this accomplished. Enough said about that, I just raised the question so that you can consider it as Board Members for future reference. It isn't a problem as far as I'm concerned. My administration takes direction from the strategic plan, so that's, that's very important to us to have that, have that discussion. It was a wonderful discussion, actually, certainly some people got a little heated, but that's the way it is. but that's the way it is in democracy.
How does it go about revising? Let's say that.
Yes, at a subsequent meeting, certainly any board member could call the attention to the chair, Emily, about the interest in putting on the agenda for a future meeting or consideration by the executive committee, reconsideration, or a proposal of language that would be different. It usually ends up better by, by going with a proposed, proposed language change, so people know what they're talking about. Well, very good. The other thing, I'm, I'm going to hand this to Durin, just as, so the public sees what we're looking at here. This is about a six-page document that lists the activities, professional learning activities and goals, listing the participants, the provider and the staff, the timeline, and the indicators of progress, usually related to student performance, although there's some other indicators, to hold my administrative team throughout the SU accountable to meet these goals in the strategic plan. I commend the board for their interest in this plan. It was originally conceived four years ago. It's now been revised, I think improved, based on some recommendations from the administrative team and myself. And this is the way to drive consistent and continuous reform and improvement in school, by having the commitment to a strategic plan that just not only includes the school's action plan, but the neighboring schools as well, especially with Leland and Gray, the union, union schools. So we're going to have, this has draft on it now, I'm not sharing with you right now, because the administrative team has to meet once again to make sure that it complies with the revised strategic plan, because when we met in our retreat, we did not have benefit of these revisions. We had proposals, we had ideas, so we've got to do a more check on that before we post it publicly. Questions on that? I have here to pass around, probably can see there's a student article, I don't know they got this out to you before, but Alana Redden, a graduate of Leland and Gray, was published regarding her, oh, no, Alana's not the graduate, that was, that's Emily.
No, it's Emily.
Emily's published as well. Alana, this is her thing about Ode to Turkey. She's very, did anybody see it in the paper? I'll pass it around, okay. And if you may not see it, I'll pass it around. Yeah, as you can see, it's very well-written.
Yeah.
And of course, writing is one of our goals, writing costs to correct them, so it was terrific to see that exemplar. And the other thing, the only other thing I had was that I have here copies, and I didn't make enough for everyone, the copy's not working here, of, from a book that I received on the history, historical connection of every town in Vermont to the Civil War. So I have here a page on Townsend. Townsend, 100, some 120 men were credited to Townsend as having enlisted and served in the Civil War. And Brookline, let's see, Townsend, I had multiple copies here for. Brookline, no, interestingly, Brookline had 26 men serve from this old town.
That's huge.
And Dover, let's see, Dover, do I have a number of, I don't have a number, but here is something interesting. Later on in the year, later bounties of 300 were added to that. There was, first of all, in 1862, $7 to each man who joined the 16th Vermont Regiment. But later, bounties were of $300 or more. And I learned from this, sharing this with boards and people, you know, my comments, somebody pointed out that where there were some very sharp young men who would go to different towns and collect the bounty, and, and roll, you know, enlist once and collect multiple bounties. But it's very interesting, this book, to see how over the war years, the bounties kept going up to give some compensation and incentive to people to enlist.
What's the name of the book?
So it tells you what towns are from, so it, it's called Vermont and the Civil War. Oh, let's see, wait a minute, it says here, I should have the title here somewhere. No, that isn't the title.
That's a book.
Anyway, it goes by county, and it does record, it's by Coffin. Coffin is the local Vermont historian. He took about six years to visit every town. I carried my car, and then when I go to a town, I kind of look at, I'm sorry, I just don't have my, the book is now in Therah Floer's hands, one of my office people, because she wanted to check out Putney. Anyway, I'll pass it around for Townsend, and some people are here from Townsend, you can take that. I have one here from Brookline, you can take that, okay? Anyway, I, I'm particularly fond of making the connections to history, and certainly we have in this building, in 1834, yes, the original Leland and Gray, a founding of Leland and Gray as an academy there to serve the students of this valley. And it was, of course, founded as a classic, as a classic seminary, you know, in Greek and Latin, and the grad, early graduates really mostly became preachers, as I understand it. But, so we have a long tradition of, of education here in West River.
We sure do.
I'm ready to talk about Frank's thing, if you like, a little bit.
Yep, okay. Are there any questions for Stephen on his reports?
Uh, thank you. I apologize for not having a written report. Really, other things are getting in the way, and I, I will have to try to get back to it in, in October, if possible.
So Frank's not here tonight, he has a family engagement?
Yes, he has a big birthday at home, not his, so I would say, but anyway, he asked a, he relieved to spend the time at home with his daughter, who lives actually in Maryland, and is back with her husband to celebrate her birthday. So, she's a graduate of Leland and Gray, by the way, and quite successful one. The, the thing that I want to share with you is the fact that my office, particularly Frank and his accountants, are preparing for the eight audits of the eight independent accounts in school districts that we carry the books for in my office. And so that means all of these union towns, part of Leland and Gray, it also means Brookline and Newfane has independent districts, as well as Newbrook has a joint contract board. Now, it's interesting that, although there are some considerable savings in terms of that joint contract, audit is not one of them, because the auditors charge $6,900 to Brookline, $6,900 to Newfane, and $9,900 for the joint contract deal. We don't have competitive bids. That's really the difficulty we face in small towns with audits. And so the fact that the law changed last year to oblige all school districts to have an annual professional audit means that even a town like Wyndham, with a very small budget, is paying $8,500 annually now for an audit. Now, $8,500, $8,500 in, in terms of investment in the staff means three-quarters of a paraprofessional per year. That's what it's meaning in terms of this. And I argue with the legislators that this is a sledgehammer to catch a net. There are members of this board and every other board I serve that look at every single bill and every single invoice that goes out. And previously, we could do a three-year audit, although Leland and Gray by law was required to do an annual audit, because we're a union school district, as I understand it. But anyway, I commend the public for, I mean, just recommend the public, look into it and see how you feel about the necessity of this additional expense, because if I total it all up for these eight school, eight audits, I'm well over $60,000. And I would argue that that's-
Twenty-two, just for us.
It's $22,000 just for Leland and Gray. I would argue that that is money of questionable investing value, investment value in terms of the return.
Although, you know, to be fair, there's a reason why, there's been an awful lot of misuse of funds in this.
Well, there was, there, there, you know, one or two apples in the barrel can really sprout it for everybody, and I think that's what we got going on.
And I do think there's quite a bit of pushback, I, toward the legislature about that.
Any rate, the, what I, what I want to point out is that when we talk about the audits, not just the expense of the money. It means that those people who are responsible for these books need to prepare, and in fact, people you wouldn't expect to have to be prepared. Allison Hescock, my receptionist, is making, taking pains to catch up with town clerks regarding minutes for annual meetings, properly signed, so the auditors can make sure that that's right, and that we fortunately now have all of the minutes online, so we have electronic access to that for the, for the auditors to review. But this, there is a tremendous amount of preparation, and the auditors will come to my office and be there, taking up the conference room for three to four days, five days initially, and then they'll come back later in October, after, after requiring certain additional reports or clarifications. So it is a tremendously time-consuming process, and one that, if I could use the term again, can be quite distracting for the usual processing of our work in the, in the office, yeah.
This may seem like a segue onto the next discussion, but if the red goes through, and it's all one, does that mean we do one audit?
That's correct.
If all, if all five towns-
That's interesting.
-do join, it would be all, you know, Leland and Gray, plus the elementary schools, the four, the four.
Oh, there's two budgets, but...
Well, no, there, if all, if all five towns voted yes, that would be correct. It would be just the one audit.
Yeah, now, of course, the audit might be a little bit north of 20,000, it might be 25 or 26, but it's not, I mean, just, the problem is that with, with an auditing team, when they have a separate account to do, then of course, they have to go through their same, you know, process with everything in that account. And, you know, frankly, the legisla, the federal government is part of this too, you know, because the federal government is up the ante regarding any sort of public funds, and the Gadsby requirements are quite onerous for the accountants. So we get a little published book that the accountants have to produce for this, with their statement, and of course, if they make a statement and then find out later that something's awry, they're, they've lost their, their credibility and their business.
It's not an easy job, and I've often thought that, boy, for, for our students who have an interest in that, that'd be a great-
Yes, there are great opportunities in accounting, because that's probably not going to go away.
There really is not much competition out there when we put out bids for this. It's amazing.
Well, 'cause it's not a lot of money for an accountant to do all that.
Yeah, they have teams. These, I'm surprised there aren't more businesses starting up in that, and then maybe there will be, I don't know, but...
I have one other financial issue, and that is that I've received the assessment, or at least the appeal for the membership dues of the Vermont School Boards Association, and I presume, unless I hear otherwise, from the board, that you want to continue that membership and resource. I do need to tell you exactly how much it costs. It is based on the size of the school. They're a little more enlightened there than we find if me ask. Sorry for that jab. To me, apologies. But any rate, it's $1,891.08. So that's the annual assessment for your membership. There are over 1,700 board members, is that right?
1,500.
1,500 board members-
1,500 school board members in the state of Vermont.
In the state of Vermont, and-
They operate on a team of four, four people up there, and do a great service for us, and I always encourage everybody to, hold on a second, I always encourage everybody to make use of it in any way you can.
That was an interesting meeting on the health.
Yeah, yeah, and that's one of the things, and I think it is very helpful, they stay abreast. But one of the most important things that I think we get out of the, our dues at VSBA is the advocacy at the legislative level that happens for the whole legislative session and beyond. I mean, it goes on every side of it, and there's a lot of connection that our local schools and school boards have because of the work that they do with the legislature. And they are really relied on, in fact, to, to share, you know, information, and, and we do advocate for our schools and our school systems up there. So it's a, it's an important, I would recommend you do keep this going.
And you've gotten copies of the legislative reports.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of it, too. You had a question?
I was just going to ask what the benefit to the membership was, but I think you-
Well, that's only one. I mean, honestly, there's an awful lot more that goes on. I mean, we have training that's available, and all sorts of stuff, and-
They do retreats, they help us assess our goals and constantly change. They really offer a lot of-
They do.
-great stuff, and where you have turnover sometimes on school boards, and you have a lot of people coming, and they really know nothing, there's all kinds of material- That was me, and I went up to a training session way up somewhere north, and it was incredibly helpful, and they really worked very hard.
It's not an easy job being a school board member, I'll tell you, and there's a lot to learn, and for those-
Steve Harmon, correct.
Yeah, it is, it is.
I will add to that, just a couple of specifics. Negotiations with the bargaining units are always an issue, and those come up cyclically. That's a tremendous resource we have in terms of what's going on across the state, you know, what is really approaching an appropriate settlement or expectation. Then there's legal advice. I can call up anytime and get legal advice on behalf of the board, or on behalf of the administration, because the VSBA does recognize that in order to have strong, effective schools, the, the administration and the board have to work hand-in-hand to, to accomplish the goals, meet the goals. So in fact, there, these two organizations share an office building in Montpelier, and they share some, the three, the VPAs-
VPAs, VSAs.
Vermont Principal Association, Vermont School Board Association, and Vermont Superintendent's Association. And, and these legislative reports that I find so helpful to share with the boards are, are really keeping us abreast and giving us the opportunity to go up there and witness and testify, Emily's been up many times to testify before committees. And that is really where the formative decisions of legislators take place, is in these committee hearings, I've learned.
It is.
They don't resolve things in debate on the floor. They really have to decide where they are going on the committee's recommendation. So that is, and certainly, we have a very fine legislature in terms of its grassroots, what do you call it? They don't consider this something non-professional, but you know what I mean? They're not, they're not permanent politicians, is what we're saying in Vermont.
And I think there's 280 bodies or something, approximately, entities that are members. I think there's only one school district in the state of Vermont that are not members, and that's North Bennington, it became private. But other than that, everybody's a member, because they see the value.
I'll approve this, I'll approve this, okay? Thanks.
Hey, um-
Except for finance, I think, yes. I, I, we do not have, although I was going to try to stop by, I didn't have the time to pick it up, a, you know, a summary of the, of the expenses to date on the budget. You will have a very nice report now from Afton, we're all, we have the new budgets loaded in, so you will, you will have a very good look at what is exceeding the budget or not. The only thing about the report we haven't figured out is if you exceed the budget, it's going to say zero, because if you had nothing in the budget to begin with, no, it could be negative if you've exceeded an amount that's in the budget, but if you have a line item that wasn't there in the budget, and we have an expenditure, no matter what you spend, it's going to be zero, because after all, zero divided by Ryan or anything is infinity. You'll, you'll see it in, in, for the real next meeting. And you should get those reports every month, as we had planned, and as you have in the past, so.
It's been a big undertaking.
By the way, you're in good shape, too, that's important to say. You're solvent, you're going to meet your payroll. We're not in a situation like some of my boards that are looking at borrowing more money, our neighbors in Townsend, I know the board voted last night to ask the select board to forward, in advance of anticipation of the taxes, some money, because they don't have, since the delay of the tax bills was great, they don't have the money coming in, and they won't meet payroll the first of August, if we, October, if we don't get some money. They already borrowed a lot to get where they thought they needed to be. This is typical of school boards, you, you have been in the situation before as well, to bridge the gap between last year and this year, before taxes arrive is always a problem for school boards in Vermont, because of the structure of the tax system and payment process. Questions from finance? Thank you.
Okay, all business, RED Study Committee report, that's the three of us. We had our first meeting last night, Townsend. You're Townsend?
First informational meeting.
Were you there?
I thought it went very well.
It went just fine.
The first informational meeting for the RED was in Townsend. I was just asking if they were there.
I wasn't.
There were, there were a lot of questions. We, we made our presentation. Based on the feedback we got from the presentation, just in terms of clarifying questions, it's probably a pretty good presentation. There was a lot of discussion afterwards, you know, about what it will look like, and how it's going to work, and, and, you know, I think we answered all the questions as best we could. You know, there are some questions that there aren't answers to, because the new RED board will make those decisions if they come into existence.
WCEE board.
WCEE board.
I'm trying to stay away from RED, because I'm a RED.
But, you know, we'll do it again in Jamaica on Thursday.
That's right.
If anybody wants to come.
And we're in Townsend again, at Leland and Gray, in the main gym on October 1st.
Is that the Austral, when is the Australian?
The, the vote is on October 8th by Australian, right, in each town. So, any questions, maybe you want to?
I thought there were a lot of questions about comparing the, the budget for what we have now versus the budget that could be if we were in a RED, and we never felt that we could approach that, those figures-
Well, we can't, actually, because we-
Because we didn't know exactly what the structure was coming like.
We don't have the authority as a committee. We don't have the authority as a committee to make those decisions.
That was an open question that was important to people, but we couldn't answer.
And unfortunately, it is a flaw of the law, really. I mean, it's the way it's set up, and it is a big time flaw, and I think, you know, we're not the only ones who are dealing with it, and I certainly am going to be sharing that with the legislature as I go up there and speak to them. I've been told many times by legislators, especially those who have written some of the language around this, that why aren't more school districts taking advantage of this opportunity? We've given them, well, we are a great example of why they are not doing it. We really do feel very committed to doing this for benefits to students. And that has been our focus of our study committee, was really, it, it hasn't been about the finance, but, but when you take it to a community, what they wanna know is, is this gonna make my taxes go up, which is one of the first questions that came to us. And, of course, you know, the answer to that is, will your taxes go up? We, we can't even answer whether your taxes will go up if we don't do this. So, I mean, will they go up? This isn't necessarily gonna make them go up, but we can't answer so many questions. And one of the school board, I mean, one of the committee members basically said it at the end, and, you know, it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough situation, sitting up there and sharing all that we've done over two years and still not be able to give those answers, because we don't have the authority to make decisions for a board that gets elected at the same time you vote on, the same day, in fact, that you vote on whether you enter this structure. So, we're plugging ahead as best we can to make sure that the information is out there. I think we did, Joe was right. I think we had, we had a pretty good presentation, we've had a lot of support from our consultant helping us with this, and we've worked long and hard to get the information out there. We asked for clarifying questions after each PowerPoint slide that we put up there, which, which identified all the, the key points to the, to the proposal. And I think there was only one segment that had a clarifying question or two, the rest did not. So, clearly, we are sharing the information that we have to share. There's been a lot of questions about, and Bruce said finances that were.
What was the turnout?
Pretty good.
Twenty-five, I kinda.
Yeah, it was a pretty good turnout there.
Yeah, it was a good turnout. There were actually members from other towns there, at least two members, three members from Wyndham, one board member from Wyndham who spoke. And interestingly, a principal from Twin Valley Elementary spoke about the savings that they, but she's a resident of the towns, about the savings. She made the point, well, you know, really, I found in Twin Valley that we had to just keep telling people and explaining what it would look like and what it would cost and what the savings would be. And the way, they did not have to follow the same rules as our committee, because they were just talking as two towns together to do something, which is what Brookline and Newthing did.
Right.
So, it'll be interesting to see whether, you know, a sufficient number of people going to the polls are persuaded that it's, they're, they're in circumstances that warrant improving the house, as one of our colleague board members said, that we're not talking about building a new house here, we're typical Vermonters, we have a house and we've outgrown it, we've gotta improve it so we can accommodate everybody in the house in a cost-effective way. So, but, once again, money is not where the object is. We got, we're looking at, at trying to secure the, the learning opportunities that kids enjoy now in our elementary schools and, and Leland and Gray, and sustain them.
But, there is a threat to our education system in the state of Vermont right now. We are one of the highest spending, if not the highest spending per pupil costs in the country, in Vermont. And, yeah, North Dakota's the other one, and us. And, and we get really good results. We don't get the best results, we don't get excellent results, but we get pretty good results. But, but the costs are very high and they're not getting any less. And our enrollment does continue to decline here some. I mean, I think, you know, I think the last I heard it was twenty seventeen or twenty-eighteen when we reached the bottom of our decline in the state of Vermont for enrollment. That's bumped, it's been bumped back a little bit. So, those are challenges. We are, our, our kids need to know more, the accountability standards are higher, we are required to do more all the time, and, you know, we talk about it here all the time. You know, the dual credit was a perfect example of that today. Great things, but we have to be able to afford it. If we lose our, right, if we lose our programs, we lose our students as well.
We're one of the most expensive states to live in.
We are.
One of the lowest per capita income.
And this legislature's really feeling it. That's the thing, the legislature's really feeling it, we're all feeling it in our pockets, we're all feeling it in our tax rates. And so, there's a lot of conversation going on at the state level, the state board, the legislature, the governor's office, there's been a lot of conversations going on. And I have no idea what direction they're gonna go, but I really have no doubt they're gonna go somewhere, cause it, it's not sustainable. And we need to make sure educational opportunities are there for kids and that they're improving.
It's our responsibility.
It is. And so, that's sort of where our committee, the WCED study committee has been coming, you know, forward with that, because we believe that we need to make those changes for our kids. And if this one doesn't happen, I am certain that at some point, just like there has been several reports and studies done in the past before this, there will be something else again, because it is, again, I say, not sustainable. But, we do support our local schools and our, I mean, there's no recommendation to close schools, that should be a community's decision, so that's in the report, and so, we, we move forward. We're gonna hold that meeting on Thursday in Jamaica, and we're gonna.
Or the state will make us do something.
Well, and, and, you know, Stephen talked about it last night, and I think that it was, you know, very timely, and he mentioned about the, the threat to the small schools grant, and that is definitely gonna be one of those first things. I think that we, it's been proposed and on the table, you know, at committee level, I think, for a number of years, and it will continue to be there, I think.
One thing about, one thing about the, if the towns, the towns that vote, or the four towns required to vote to, yes, to make this happen, that would guarantee at least those four towns the small schools grant for five years.
Five more years.
By law, so, as well as the other tax benefits. But, you know, this is really not, should not be motivated by money. People need to think carefully, how can we sustain? I just reinforce what Emily said about performance in Vermont. Dr. Bill Mathis was published in the paper two days ago, I believe, his column. He serves on the State, State Board of Education. He, he is noted for his research on educational issues. He actually, I don't agree with him very often, but in this case, I do. He, he did find that if Vermont as a state compared its scores on the international assessment comparison data from the sources that we have across the states, that not only would Vermont be among the highest in the state and the country, but, in fact, we'd be sixth or seventh in the world in math and language.
Yeah, I read that, that was fascinating.
And, you know, that says something about the value of the communities, the value of our community's place in education. And I would say, suggest, once again, the way we are able to, the kind of feeling we can give our students in class to succeed and to be the best they can be. But, we do not make it universal. We have a number of students who, for whom school is still jailed, and they don't want to be here. And that is the challenge that any, any, all public educators are engaged, are motivated to deal with. Otherwise, we'd be in private schools.
The good news is, very simply, that there is a ton of support for our local schools by our local communities, and that is a good thing. And no matter what, good will come out of that. That's what I truly believe, it's the only reason I keep doing this. There is so much support for our local schools and for our kids, so we're gonna keep moving forward.
Now, there is supposed to be a website that's up and running today or tomorrow, so if anybody goes to WCED, I'd love to see if it actually shows up. Jeremy, can you, see if you can find it?
It's coming.
The other information is available through the, the board website under RED Committee, but I, I, I hope that we get that up there soon with the information for the public, cause.
Is it dot org?
It saves, it didn't work.
Dot org?
Dot org.
Yeah, I mean, I.
No, I don't think so. Maybe I have to spell it out to me really good. Wyndham Central Education District, it, there's a.
We had it on the, oh, here it is.
I mean, the reason we know it's happening is because we have somewhat contracted to construct it and get it up and running, and she estimated it would be today.
WCED, is that correct? Capital letters, dot Wyndham Central dot org.
Yeah, it's not there yet.
Not there, okay, we're not up yet.
She's working on it.
Yep, okay. All the information will be there, though, I just.
Can I just quickly say something in regard to Emily's statement?
Absolutely.
I'm new, as I've said many times already, but Emily has worked so hard on this thing, I know, for two years, and I, I understand the commitment and the bulk of the work. And to hear her make a statement like that is symptomatic of what's good about education. The fact that you could say, we're gonna keep moving, we're gonna keep going. You have just given heart and soul to this.
Well, thank you.
Thing, and it's, it's incredible, so, just wanted to say that.
I'm certainly not alone.
No, 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 but you're sort of.
For sure.
You're just always there. It's very reassuring.
Thank you. Okay, so, we have a new item on, new business. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, strategic plan, I think that.
No, we haven't done the rest yet. Let me just say one thing on old business, though, cause I did write a note down here that I wanted to mention. I just wanted to say thank you to the board. I did it in an email quickly afterward, but for the staff breakfast, that was so excellent this year, as it always is every year. And I know Durin sent out a lovely thank you as well, and Lyndal, you're stepping up was really very helpful this year.
It wasn't great. I, I brought a colleague, I brought a colleague from my old school in New York, believe it or not, who made the pancakes.
She, she did bring a colleague who, who helped her, but it was her too. And it was great, and I, I felt like we fed a lot of people really quickly, and there was an awful lot of appreciation from the staff this year, as there always is. And so, I'm just very grateful that the board is willing to step up and do that kind of work, cause you all put a lot of time and effort into it, so I thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, new business, strategic plan, you've talked about it.
I don't think we need to take more time on that.
We don't need to go anything.
I wonder welcome any comments.
If there isn't anything else, I'm sorry, the, the co-curricular negotiations, we talked about that briefly at the beginning of the meeting. They're ready to start. There isn't a meeting date, there was a meeting date thrown out, but it's, I think not. We'll, we'll schedule a meeting date for whoever's gonna do it.
Frank is hoping for one meeting.
Which we succeeded in doing last time.
We can do that again.
Okay, cool. One or two, maybe, last time.
Sometimes negotiations are protracted, but this is a short.
Maybe it was not one meeting on the last one, it, it was the support staff that was one meeting. That contract was one meeting.
Yes.
And the co-curricular took a couple.
Co-curricular was three.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. Well, you shoot for one again, let's put it down.
Yeah, well, we.
Yeah, let's shoot for one.
So, are you willing to?
Yes.
To do it? We just need a motion to appoint two board members. Two co-curriculars, you should name them.
We have to wait this down.
Oh, Emily and Joe.
I'll do it if no one else wants to just, I think we can, we did it last time, we're familiar with the process.
I'll second it.
Okay, so, there's a motion by Patty to appoint Joe and Emily to the co-curricular negotiations team, and Lyndal seconded it. Any discussion?
Could I just point out to the public and the audience that this, these negotiations are regarding the compensation for the advisors and the coaches for co-curricular activities, that is, things that happen outside of the teacher's contract, outside of the school, the traditional school day. And it pertains to people both who are employed by us as faculty members and other staff members, but also members of the community who step forward to take these responsibilities. And it, it's, it's actually an addendum or a side agreement with, that, you know, that pertains to the larger bargaining agreement with the professional staff.
Very good. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, abstentions? Okay, motion passes. So, we just need to review approved bills and pay orders, put that somewhere in there.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Joe and Bruce.
Appreciate it, both.
I'll offer to.
Come again.
I did nothing.
Okay, so, we have.
Share this on.
Warrants from between eight sixteen and nine ten totaling two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents. And we have three payrolls, sixty-eight, seventy-seven, seventy-nine totaling one ninety-nine, nine fourteen, sixty-nine. Total warrants and payrolls are four hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-nine cents. I need a motion.
And commotion to approve pay orders for blah, 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 blah.
The amount says red.
There's, there's a way that, there's a way that Tara always put it in, let me get a second first, we'll talk about it. So, okay, so Bruce seconded it. This has to be in the minutes.
Enough.
Bruce put it in the last time by literally looked like typing it out. I, I'm not sure how Tara used to do it, but she always had it in very similar to this, so I, we might wanna.
I don't know how she did it.
I don't know how she did it, I never did know how she did it. I don't know if you were aware of how she did it. She didn't get it electronically, so, she scanned, maybe, I don't know.
It sounded like she agonized over it also.
Well, we'll have to figure that, we're gonna have to figure that out, but this does need to be in there the whole.
I can scan it if I can keep it.
She had a method of doing it, which I, it was not that technical.
She was amazing.
She is.
She is amazing, but she's no longer amazing.
What was she doing?
She's just amazing with other people now, though.
So, anyway, we have a motion and a second to approve the bills and pay orders, the warrants and payroll. Is there any discussion? Any, everything looks good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for reviewing it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Our consent agenda, thank you, Bruce, for the minutes. Just need a motion unless somebody wants to talk about the minutes.
Make a motion, we approve the.
Just the consent agenda.
Have a consent agenda.
Okay, then move to approve this consent agenda. And Jeremy seconded it? Patty? No, not really, but we do it. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? I actually think it does need a second, it just doesn't, it's not, it's a non-discussed, there's no discussion. Okay, executive session?
Nope.
No executive session needed, next meeting, our board meeting is the same night, that's right. I was looking at the date here thinking, how could that be? But, our board meeting is the same night as the. For the WCED.
So, we're all gonna skip and hold hands over to the vote.
We will have all voted before you get here, because polls close at seven.
We'll have to vote, we have a school meeting, so we're gonna have to hurry.
Some big close at seven.
Can I ask for something to be on the agenda?
You certainly can, absolutely.
Like an update on the Chinese students?
Question.
The ones that we might get?
Oh, the, oh, yes, okay.
Our sister school, our brother's school.
Yep, great. Was there something else we talked about putting on the agenda? Maybe I'll think of something else, too many meetings to remember.
Too early to talk about FY fifteen budget, right? October, we usually do it.
We do it, we normally do it in October. I, you know, I would suggest that you've talked to Frank and work with him and seen whether if there's, yeah, I don't really know.
Budget prep.
I, I wanna be sensitive to the staff and to Durin and to the business office as well, and not make requests.
We usually start out with giving a direction, though, don't we, like?
We, we do sometimes, yeah.
Yeah, I think if you look at this, yeah, if you look at the strategic plan and the reports Durin's given and the, that school action plan, you know, and just either redirect or say what the priorities should be, that would be helpful.
What we can do is have a general budget conversation on the next agenda, so if you remember that, it would be helpful.
Yeah, I got budget prep ideas.
If I could just say that over the summer, fifteen students, many from choice towns, have registered at Leland and Gray, the highest number in years. have registered at Leland and Gray, the highest number in years.
But I've read that, I was really surprised.
Yeah, I asked around, so, because we, so this year, more than a quarter of our students, it's their first year at Leland and Gray.
Wow, that's real.
That's a big deal.
That's great.
Yes, yes, lots of good places.
Because you have a big class that came in.
Yes, big class that came in plus the fifteen. And I'm not even talking about the foreign exchange students, or Chinese students. Um, just three this year.
Oh, okay.
That's great. That's really good news, Durin.
Yeah, that's really cool.
I'm sure it has something to do with it.
Well, one parent registering students said, I think they published it somewhere. I heard Leland and Gray has the best teachers, that's why we're here.
Yeah, you did. Put it in your Monday notes, I think, because I read that. Yep. It is, and it's.
Absolutely. Glad to have you.
I agree, wholeheartedly. All right, so, and, and in fact, the, that's our next board meeting on October eighth. Our, not mentioning the other dates here, the WCED information meeting on October first in the gym. And we don't have a, we don't have a Wyndham Central meeting scheduled, do we?
Yes, we do. Well, the executive committee is in October.
Yeah, that'll be the compensation committee and stuff. I can't remember, actually, I probably have it in my phone.
I got it.
And there's other WCED meetings between then and now? Because you could attend, like this one in Newfane.
Absolutely, and I'd be happy to read those dates out.
I have it here if you want it.
Go ahead, please.
Well, you had the Monday the ninth, so Thursday, the twelfth in Jamaica, Tuesday the seventeenth at Wyndham.
In September.
I'm sorry, uh, Tuesday, September twenty-fourth at Newbrook Firehouse.
Uh, it's actually at Newbrook School.
Did they change it? Okay, so it's an old email.
Okay, because I got it.
I, I'm concerned that you actually got it that way. I talked to Allison about it today.
I told everybody at the firehouse because I saw it.
Oh, that was a Steven John email from six days ago.
It's my fault.
I'll run around and change it.
My fault.
Everybody said, I think it's in the school. I said, no, I know it's in the firehouse, I saw it.
It's been in the school all along and it just got.
But it came out, it's in the.
I think the confusion was around the fact that the vote, the, the town of Newfane made a decision a few years ago that they were going to hold all their Australian ballot votes, not at the town office, but at the Newbrook Firehouse because it's easier for them to, to, it doesn't disrupt the town office in fact as much. Other people can keep working while there's people coming in and out. So, um, we vote at the Newbrook Fire Department when we vote in Newfane. And I think just, it, it's just confusion over where we were gonna hold the information meeting at the same place, but we weren't. We, we have been holding these at each school. We thought it was appropriate for people to get into the schools for the information meetings, so we are going to be in Newbrook School. Yeah, that'd be great.
Is there a way to tell, get the school, like, Newbrook doesn't have it on their webpage? Like their parent contact?
You know, I talked to Allison about that today, and I just got them to update it on our, our homepage. So it's on the calendar at the Wyndham Central homepage. We did send a, um, press release to the reformer. I don't think it's been published in the reformer yet, but there are other places that it's out, but I do think that's a, I don't know why it's not on the schools.
Well, I have to talk to all the schools about linking it because they're the ones that do that, so.
So they have to go, you have to talk to each of the schools to get them to link it.
It's gone out on the, uh, listserv to Brookline residents. I, I don't know about Newfane, but it's gone out. And the select board, I went to their meeting Wednesday, and they've asked for a copy of the, uh, questions and answer thing.
Oh, good.
Yeah, that will be published, actually.
That's gonna be on that website, the facts she, which are twenty-four.
But that was a good sign that they wanted to be ready if people asked them about.
That's great. And so there's, um, there's twenty-four questions and answers.
And they would like to copy, so, but I think Leanne Parker knows that.
Good, good, because we do have a rep in every town, so, so if there's anybody who needs anything.
But just, it didn't come through the Newbrook School community, through their email or their website? But if, um, unless they sent a paperback copy home, which I'd be surprised. It just seems like it's something that they should, it's, of all the people that carry the town.
I'll have Allison follow.
Okay, so Stephen's gonna have Allison check with each of the schools to get them to link that. I appreciate you bringing that up because it's really important.
Well, there's a lot of parent information, they get a lot more of it, it's becoming less.
So just, just to reiterate for people on TV there too, so the vote for the members of the Newfane, the voters of Newfane is at the firehouse.
The vote is, as they always are, Newfane and residents will not be surprised about that.
And, and the, the, uh, the, the vote for Brookline is at the Brookline Town Hall.
Right, where, where your votes always are as well.
But then, when we have the information meeting, that's when both of the boards, school district boards, thought they should have it at the school, the Newbrook School. So the information meeting is at the Newbrook School. I should have been able to remember that. I got confused because a member of the Brookline community badgered me about the location of that. And I, I really got confused with the two, two locations myself. I take full credit for the, for the problem.
I know it's been booked, I know it's been booked at Newbrook, for sure. And then, and then there's the final one here. I don't know if you named the final one, October first in Leland and Gray.
I didn't because it was on our, I was on our agenda.
October twenty-third is the WCSU executive committee board meeting. Now, that meeting is, uh, is a public meeting and certainly would be welcome any board members to attend. Uh, that, that committee, uh, advises, reviews a proposal from the, from me, uh, regarding compensation for non-union employees, is the way to call it, in our subsequent budget. Like administrative assistants in the buildings, uh, in my office particularly. It's actually WCSU people in my office, but it usually pertains to the other school districts. Sorry?
The location hasn't been decided yet. We need to make that decision immediately.
Although we did, uh, the location of it to turn around.
But that notice will glass soon on where we're gonna hold that. I just have to remember where we've been. We try to move around a little bit.
Try to move around.
But actually, um, if this is, see, this is a, what, what we made a decision about at Wyndham Central, for those of you who weren't, not there, although maybe many of you were, um, Wyndham Central holds their full board meetings here in this gym. But we only meet a few times a year now. The executive committee is the one that's meeting on the twenty-third, and we do try to move around from school to school, but that's the executive committee. That doesn't require all three voters. That requires just the single vote from each town, school district, each school district.
To make a quorum, that's how we made a quorum at the Hermitage.
That's right.
Can you let me know when the vocation will?
Yeah, we'll let everybody know. We'll be sending an email out as soon as we decide, um, where the location is.
Yeah, we should talk about the career center, advisory.
Oh.
Oh, I used the wrong term, the career center.
Okay. That one's, I thought I'll look at the careers center now.
It is always.
Yeah, no, no, I was just asking the timing. I was just asking.
Okay.
Make a motion, man.
Okay, Patty. Bruce seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.